Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
The board of management?
As quick as we can.
My apologies.
My apologies. Yes, I do. The playground on Courtland Street is officially completed as of last Wednesday. We're gonna have a dedication on that playground spring of next year. Public Works needs to do a little bit of work on some portions that weren't covered by the grant, and the contractor continued their work. But I'm most certain that we'll get that completed in the early part of the spring so that we can have a ribbon-coming ceremony. Other than that, nothing else to report this time.
You think we're manager? Kevin? Yeah, Kevin, what about Walton Simon Street, Hartford? When does that end?
To be honest with you, I'm gonna discuss with the chief to have a robo-call to end that, you know, effective this week.
Alright.
Okay.
Also, Lily Fieldhouse, can you get me a copy of that short?
Okay.
If there's not a copy of the first one, it's a big problem, too. That's all I have there. John?
Yeah, Kevin, at the last meeting, we talked about Courtland Street speeding problem there, and I mentioned the fact that they were interested in speed bumps. Did anything transpire in research on that, or?
I did convey that to traffic, and, you know, we've had a lot of requests for speed bumps.
I know.
I know that they put it on the watch list. And eventually, I believe, they're gonna transport the mobile message board over there. But I didn't get any word back in on the request for speed bumps.
Well, on one of those same lines as John's asking, Kevin, I know now they make mobile bumble strips. You know, that go across the street, and you can bolt it down and then move them? Not speed bumps, but...
Oh, you say what? What? What's that noise?
Radio? There's something playing.
Oh, oh, alright.
It's on the street.
Yeah, so they make mobile ones that we could put out, and then the police, you know, they can move them after a week or two, whatever. Maybe look into that.
Okay.
So you, I had a couple of quick things, Kevin. I know that they got a new domiciled investigator up at the schools, and they're going around now looking for residents who aren't residents. And I was just wondering what the status was of those people that they've been finding that aren't residents. Are we getting reimbursed? Are we getting refunds? I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we need to look at. And I was just wondering what the status of that particular process is at this point. Along the lines of more services online, Councilman Cosarelli and I had an opportunity to talk to some of the people down at the League of Municipalities. And one of the products we saw was this seamless docks. And it's basically being able to put applications, like for COs and things, online, create and convert them, e-sign them as well as database them. So I just wanted to give you that, so you have it. I mean, it would be nice for us to add those forms out there for people.
I'm good, right? Thanks, Kevin. Communications?
A letter, a preservation receipt from our insurance from the Township of Belville Library and Board of Trustees.
Very much respected.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Orders for introduction?
Orders number one for introduction, ordinance of the Township of Belville, mending chapter two, section one, the forming of recreational property affairs.
The board of management, there? I put this on to try and help the veterans with their brain and stuff. And now I hear that they don't want nothing to do with this, so. A lot of tables, and now...
Can I say something, please?
Not now.
Make a motion to table it.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number two for introduction, and ordinance of the Township of Belville, mending chapter two, section three, off the second amendment.
Move for introduction.
Second.
Quick call of the rule.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction, and ordinance to amend ordinance number three, 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 creating personnel positions in the doctrine classification compensation plans.
Move for introduction.
Second.
Quick call of the rule.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Orders number four for introduction, and ordinance of the Township of Belville, mending chapter five licensing of doors.
Make a motion to introduce it.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Make a motion, open public participation.
Second.
Quick call of the rule.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Well, now you can say something.
I'll wait until...
This is public participation.
Okay.
This is it.
In reference to Councilman Kennedy's remarks, I did not say that, I said that the person that wants to get involved with our parade is a non-veteran, and that the Belville Veterans Council runs the parade every year, there's never been a problem. In fact, it's been getting bigger. As far as spectators this past, as you know, there's an article in the Belville Times knocking the organizers of the parade. And I felt that I had to rebut that. And I feel, when I invite people to speak, it's always military officials of veterans in the town council, because you are dignitaries up there. I was requested from Mr. Sweller to speak. I said, "Well, if I have time, I'll give you some time." I, as you know, Councilman Longo spoke for quite a long while. I had no control over that, and I was there, and I kept, you know, giving him this sign to cut it. But as far as I'm concerned, Belville Veterans Council, and traditionally, in each community, Belville veterans run the parade in conjunction and assistance with the township to honor veterans. And that's the way it's always been. And this gentleman here is with the American Legion, he's the commander from the American Legion. He assisted me, these two guys assisted me with the parade. There was no problem with the parade, except for spectators, and I had no control over that. All newspapers were contacted in reference to that. We had an ad on W., the Belville Cable Channel, School Channel. And, I mean, I notified, you know, I can only do what I can do. Okay? And I thought it was a good parade, in fact, people came up to me after the parade and said it was good. As far as the reeds, we do that, we change them every Memorial Day. If somebody has a problem with the reeds being old, they need to contact the township to let me know, and we'll take care of it. But to bring it up into, you know, out of the blue into the newspaper and not saying nothing to me about it, it's the first I heard about all this stuff. So anyway, I am opposed to Mr. Sweller taking any part in the Belville Veterans Council. Now, if he wants to do something for his uncle, maybe they should have, you know, a Henry Sweller Day or something. You know, something like that. So, that's all I got to say, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also, I have a letter that's going to, I'm sorry, a letter to the Belville Times in rebuttal to Mr. Sweller.
I think I missed link this afternoon.
First, when I spoke, I was misquoted in the paper. I never meant to say anything negative about Billy or the veterans. All I was trying to say is, there's old ideas, and we need new ideas. And if we don't allow others to get involved, younger veterans, not just me, my uncle's Medal of Honor recipient, who cares? You know what? It doesn't bother me. But to march down that parade, and any of these gentlemen can say that that's a parade, then they need to get their eyes checked. The parade needs to be, there's so many things we could do. Like I said, let's get the schools involved, okay? Let's, maybe the town is not giving them enough money to have enough fans, to have a parade that people want to see. So you know what? There's such things as nonprofits. You need people who know what they're doing. This is old school, and it doesn't work anymore. If this continues, there will be no parade. There will be those veterans walking down an empty street, and that's all there will be. I give it two years at best. I walked down there, and I felt bad for the veterans, that there were three people on a corner, two people over here. That's not a parade. They should be getting people on every side of the street to show the respect for them. Why they're not asking for that respect, I don't know, okay? And I only mention the reeds because I didn't know that they were changed every Memorial Day. To me, to have a reed for 12 months, it fades and it falls apart. I pick my uncles reaped up every week when the wind blows it over, okay? Why these guys want to take this, I don't know where they're coming from with this angle. I have nothing but their good faith. Billy Steimal does a great job, but he needs help. Those gentlemen cannot do it themselves. And if nothing's done, then let them walk down that march, down that parade with three people on each corner. I will not be there. That's all I have to say. Listening to Mr. Sweller here, it seems to appear to me that what he's concerned with is the spectators on the streets. So, to me, it appears that if the parade was twice as long as it is, we still would not have any more people on the street. The problem is that a lot of people on that day may go to picnics, and families, and other affairs, plus the fact that there is a lot of disinterest also in the general public about veterans. They don't care about parades anymore. Might be just that way in this town. I'm from Nutley. We get a good turnout there in Nutley for a fair...
You don't have a parade.
The Nutley Parade? Memorial Day. You have Memorial Day.
Well, we have a parade, we get a good turnout.
They have Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, that's different.
So, that's, I just wanted to make that point in his presentation. As far as the parade is concerned, I think the parade for a town this size is a pretty nice parade. It's just that the idea is, if someone can promote more people to come out to the parade...
I think that's what we're trying to do.
That's the problem, not the parade, and not the reeds.
That's what we're trying to do.
No, I can't let you talk no more, because then I would have to everybody...
I guess you're following the law, it's all...
Yes, exactly.
Yes. Anybody else want to stick?
Through the chair, I agree. I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to drive more people to the event. We're one of the few townships that I know of that actually has and honors the veterans on Veterans Day. And I know that at least Colonel Ricky and Aaron Gutierrez were enamored with how we did it, what we came up with. But you're right, we need better participation from the community itself, and that is the real test, I think, Anthony. That's what we gotta figure out. That's what we're asking for. That's really what it's about.
You have to consider the ethnicity in the town also, which some of this doesn't produce on the interest.
Okay.
We've been at war for 14 years.
Well, I can't let a discussion go public.
That's right.
Hi, I'm Diane Rockwell, 403 Courtland Street. I have to say that I was at the parade here in Belville on Veterans Day, and because my daughter attends a private school, took her out of school on Veterans Day, and took her to New York City. I believe this gentleman here, he has good intentions in trying to drive the public out, to get the schools involved. Children today, I have, in the Belville parade, I saw children marching in the Boy Scouts, and I was shocked, they're dragging the flag. And what an insult to my dad, to my son, who left a few years ago, who retired. And I believe that these gentlemen, nothing against them in the front, should just at least hear what he has to say, what he has to offer, not to take anything away from them. It's a great pride to see. It brought tears to my eyes, not only in Belville, but also in New York City. And ethnicity, in New York City, there were people five rows back, five deep, of all ethnicities, Native Americans, Puerto Ricans, blacks, whites, Irish, German, everybody was there. So I just asked, please, open up your hearts and open up your minds, and see what this gentleman has to say, to just bring the community as a whole together, to honor our veterans.
Thank you. Mr. Frank Dittor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The library, she submitted her letter resignation. And I just want to bring your attention, she was serving on the planning board, and the library, which was a conflict. So I think that in itself may have disqualified that vote by the planning board, when she participated in that vote on that northeast redevelopment plan. I think you'd better look into the legalities, and that plan that they sent you shouldn't even get here because of the improper appointment of somebody on that board. Once again, I go back to the water leaks. Yesterday morning, I get up in the morning, go in, turn the sink on, and dribble them out of my faucet. Yeah, another major leak on Cedar Hill Avenue. Look out my window, on the corner of my street, the hydrants run full blast, I guess they couldn't, and they were there all day. Today again, well, I told you, for two months, the leak on Home Street was leaking, and now it blew up overnight, and this morning, I had major leak. Them poor guys were working all day in the rain, and I took a picture of, I don't know how to solve some of the problems. All day long, while they're working, the hydrant is running four inches of water over it. Now, my little faucets, with all the water saver faucets in it, I still get $150, $160 water bill. I don't know how much money that's costing us with these water leaks, that water. And then I understand the reason they may be running the hydrants is because the valves aren't shut off, and so they're taking the pressure off. But just those two leaks, yet I don't know how many tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of gallons of water went down the sewer. So, I hope it's true what I heard today, that you may be instructing Tom Habertz to develop the clean and reliable fire repair. I hope you do it, because, not only, you turn that DPW department into a full-time water repair department. And these poor guys who work in there, and what you're doing, you're not repairing lines, you're just replacing each individual segment. So what happens, now that part is strong, and you got a leak down the line there. We've got to do this correctly. And I see Resolution 22, initiative for the award and contract for the repaving of the streets, and these streets are not having the water mains clean and reliable, I suggest you hold off on it. Now, that's the one where you appropriated $2.7 million a month or two ago, is that the one?
Yes.
Yes. Whoa. That would be better spent. And you have to have the courage to do what Bloomfield did about a dozen years ago. They sent letters there, I got a customer in the summer that did, they sent letters to the residents, "We're not going to be paving any streets." I think there was a six-year program to do the whole water system, and then they paved the streets. But they did the entire town, they told the people, "Look, we're not going to give you a happy little black asphalt. We're going to do the correct job." So that's what we need to do. So if you can hold off award and this contract, put this $2.7 million to the water system, will be good. And, you know, some of these streets, people complain about, yeah, they got the potholes, but there's little benefit to the potholes. It slows traffic down, they're naturally occurring speed bumps. So, I hope you consider that, and let's not pave these things until they're done. And then we got a robo-call about the street cleanup, that we were talking to earlier. Now, we used to suspend it, I think, from December till April 1st to March 1st. Is that, the phone call said, "To an undetermined time, or until further notice." Do the people have some schedule when they're...
Benny, what's the difference? When we're ready to, when we're ready to clean the streets, we'll send out another robo-call that in another week or two, street cleaning will be resolved.
You know, I don't see the...
What if we get a warmer spring, a warmer, you know...
We may have a mild winter, so you may start it early. We'll say exactly when, what we thought.
Well, I just, like, some kind of plan, because we're not yet, you know?
And if we tell you we're gonna do it February 4th, and it's freezing, and we can't do it, then over here, well, I thought you were gonna start. What, what was, set the robo-call up, and we're gonna start?
I'm concerned, my brother living here, and I've said, "Stop this every week cleaning." I don't mind if you do it once a month, like unions do, because most of our towns are residential, our streets are residential, and our property owners, they clean up, and our streets really aren't that dirty. So maybe we could save that...
What? Please say that again for future use.
Our residents clean our streets.
Hey, no, I mean the one where you say our streets aren't really that dirty. That's what I have to call. Thank you, Ben.
And before the veterans leave, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think you remember, when I first came to Belville, almost 50 years ago, we used to have Veterans Day parade on Veterans Day.
At night?
And, yes. And it really attracted people with the march, because you didn't have the weekends where people, like they said, are going away. So that might be another answer, hold on the actual day.
Thank you. Mr. Frank Dittor?
Phil, Frank Dittor, Governor of Prospect, David. I have a suggestion, I don't know if you would take to it. Occasionally, I go through the internet, and I go onto the town channels, and I just happen to get onto Bloomfield's town channel, and I see my son's street come up, and I say, "Wait a minute," and there's a dress. What they do is, if they're gonna clean, if they're gonna do any kind of, like, cleaning out the water system, or flushing out the hydrants, they notify them on the TV, and they tell them, "On such and such a date, we'll be flushing out your hydrants," and this, that, and the other, you know? And I think that would be a good idea, because our town channel, when I go on there, there's nothing on it, very, very little. And maybe we could utilize it by doing stuff like that to notify the people, because a lot of people don't go on the internet. Our internet, you go on our website, I mean, if there's not everything on there, even a lot of the meetings are not posted on there, that, you know, you'd want to know about. So maybe something like that in the future would help out, so people would know what's going on, and could utilize the channel, the kids in the school, and do something with it. Thank you.
Kevin, you want to say something?
I just wanted to say something about the main society, that they catch and they release in the park. All the raccoons over by my house, I trapped my own, and I trapped something like 14 in two weeks. If they're gonna charge the homeowner, it's gonna be pretty damn expensive for the homeowner, and you're gonna be hearing a lot of complaints about that. But what bothers me, what they said, is they catch them, and they release them in the park. Now, over in, I was talking to a fellow that lives in Bridge Brook Apartments, they trap them over there, and they bring them over to the park, and they release them, and that one's gonna be back next time. And it's like job security for the main society. And it's a little ridiculous, you paying, paying for that, and then drop them off there. And the cats, the cats is a whole nother issue, because I get cats from the hounds over there in Bloomfield, and they all come by my house and go and run around, so I think that's gonna be a big issue, if you're gonna start charging homeowners for what you see happening.
Anybody else, sir?
Anthony Rizzo, 76 Fairview Place. Honestly, for the veterans, that's totally a marketing issue that they would need. I don't think we need an advisory vote or anything to help with that, but you don't need an ordinance to just advertise that on the website, do you? And then probably get social media blasts, share, I would share it to my corporate thing, and whomever. I mean, I think, at least for my generation and lower, that would help for spreading awareness on that, and probably getting it to schools, would help just education-wise, bring that up, I don't know, I don't know that. Just wanted to add that. And then, wanted to know how the website is going? Is there any progress? How does that, how does that work?
I'm expecting that we'll be testing it within the next two weeks, and with any luck, it'll be supposed to kick off the new year on the new server.
Okay, cool. Do we all get to test on the development server, or is it just like...
I'll take your email, I think it was a tag, you know?
I won't be too cryptic. And then, yeah, I think that's it. Oh, and then, other than that, it's a long shot with things, but with criminal justice reform type deal, is there any way we can work with the county and further up to get a way to separate drugs and other issues, so we can have a drug court that handles rehabilitation and actually corrects situations, instead of just spending $30,000-plus on each person to keep them in a cage? That's not even standard. So if we are gonna keep them in a cage, can we get cages like Northern Europe?
The state controlled...
So, and then, is, well, then is there a way that, I guess, we can gain you guys as lobbyists to go do that for us at the state and DC level? I'll pay for any expenses, breakfast and dinner on me. But you let me know how that can work in the future.
Through the chair, if you have information, too, on different programs that are out there, that we can possibly send up the chain, that would be good.
Yeah, I guess I can look that up. Like, the minimum wage thing from Seattle, I mean, they have a whole Bureau of Labor Enforcement going in play to make sure people get paid fairly, and get money going toward rebuilding their own communities. So, I don't know. I will, I guess I'll write a memo off for you or something, but if I email it, nobody seems to answer that.
No, no, if you email it specifically, you have specific...
I don't, yeah. We'll do after, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms.
Good afternoon. Good evening. In response to what you had said, Jersey City and Hudson County actively have a program in which they, not just regular drug court, as they have in SS County, but it's a program where, while you're in jail, they provide them with services, which they would already receive anyway, but it's conditional, so that it addresses the employment, so there's less chance of recidivism, and it addresses all the needs of, it's a small pilot program. In fact, former Governor McGee is part of that, Maza from out of Hudson County, and I can give you that information, because I went to a seminar in which they were on the board, addressing some of those issues. But a lot of it has to do with education, and a lot of it has to do with giving them gain for employment, because, you know, it's easy to say, "Just they know the drugs," but if they're not working, and it's easier to sell something on a corner, drugs on the corner, in order to make a dollar, that's what they're gonna go back to. They're gonna go back to what's familiar. But, yeah, but there are programs out there, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion, close.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Make a motion, move to stand agenda.
Any additions?
No. We're good.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Anyone do these ones on the table?
On the table? Historian?
Who doesn't want to be?
We should defeat that one, right? So kill it.
Let's go right down the line. Okay?
Just do one more of these.
You want to kill it? You want to kill it?
Make a motion, do everything.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Yeah, move it, like, number...[1691.75]
Kennedy?
No.
Notari?
No.
Robell?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
No.
Resolution six.
Motion for resolution four?
Second.
Councilmember Cosaralee?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution six.
Motion for resolution four?
Second.
Councilmember Cosaralee?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution six.
Make a motion to approve the association in the main contract.
Second. With, Kevin, can you put in that contract though about the, where they release the animals? Could we make sure that they don't just release it into random parts of town?
Our citizens can go to Georgia. Quick hold of all.
Councilmember Cosaralee?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Anybody else? Yeah, I just got the interior alterations and stuff for the library.